All right, this is the Maynard zoning board of appeals.
Yes, excuse me, I'm gonna start, but okay, if you could do a roll call with the board.
Yes, that's, that's what I'm looking at here.
Okay, let me get the record, did I hit the recording?
Yeah, we, we said we were recording.
Okay, good, all right.
Yeah, it should come up. All right, so this is the Maynard zoning board of appeals meeting. It's June 26th, it's a little after 7:00 PM, like 7:04 on my computer. And let's find out who's here for the zoning board. I see John Corville, wave your hand, yes, I see Paige, and wave your hand. I see Brad Schultz, yes, we see your hand. And Leslie, I see you, yes, you're there. And I'm missing somebody, but I don't, I don't know, because I thought we had one more on the board.
We have six right now.
Yeah, so we're missing.
Just, you got John, oh Jerry.
Jerry, yeah, thank you, I knew it was another name there. On page two of this, wow, we got a full page two here.
Yep.
Do I see a Jerry out there anywhere? I don't see Jerry, if you're on.
He's on, he's just coming in right now.
Okay.
So we've got a complete board now.
All right, so we got everybody, that's good. So, as, as we start the meeting, we have four items on the agenda tonight. The first one is the meeting minutes from May 22nd. Did everybody have a chance to review it? Can I get, if so, can I get somebody to make a motion to approve it? John is waving at me, or Paige. Well, just, just let me make a footnote here that everybody's on mute. And when we need to have somebody unmuted, how does that work, Bill? Do you unmute them?
That's right, it might take me a second, I'm gonna unmute. And also, yeah, when, well, you actually opened the meeting, okay, we wanna open the meeting and we'll keep everybody on mute. And it just might take me a second, because we have, you know, a full house here, I'm going to unmute Lisa there. There, Lisa's on, okay. And I could, would you like me to unmute the board?
Please.
Okay. Let's see. I guess I can every, ask everybody if they, if they're unmuted, because if they are, they can't tell me.
Well, I, I see the little red emblem is gone, so it must be that they can, can talk. So I'm first looking from a board member to make a motion to approve the minutes of May 22nd.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 22nd, 2023.
Do I get a, do I say it second, Jerry seconding?
Yes.
And do we have any comments or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, and we have all the board members here. All in favor of the minutes as.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Since you're on, since you're on doing this all video, you need to take a roll call for every vote.
Ah, okay. I see faces, that's right, I got a call. So John?
Yes.
Yes? Paige? Brad?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so the minutes pass. The next item here is 31 Fairfield Street. This public hearing is continued from the May 22nd meeting. It's a variance application filed by Elizabeth Peterson, 31 Fairfield Street, Maynard. The subject property is a non-conforming, single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot located in an S2 zoning district, which is Single Family Residence District 2. The applicant is requesting a variance from the maximum building coverage of 15%, extending the existing non-conformity from approximately 25% to 31% and an increase of pervious coverage from 40% to approximately 43%. So the petitioner, please, and once we figure out where you are in here, make sure that you're unmuted before we talk. Okay, do you see her there, Bill? Betsy Peterson?
Yeah, let's see, one second here. Oh, okay, yeah, there we go. Okay, there should be, Betsy, can you hear, are you on?
Thank you, yes.
There we go, okay.
So, Betsy, if you would explain your petition and what you are asking for.
And is it okay to share my screen, to share my presentation?
Sure, Bill, can she do that?
Yeah.
I don't think I can.
Yeah, we see a screen here, that's good.
Just trying to get to the button, sorry about that. Um, what's? That's gracious. I'm sorry, I don't seem to be able to exit out of that, let me try that one more time. Would be better if I started at the beginning. So my name is Betsy Peterson, I am appealing tonight for a variance on coverage and setback. I live at 31 Fairfield Street, and my home is a 1918 one-and-a-half-story bungalow pictured here. What's, sorry. This is a map that shows Elmwood and Fairfield Streets, and you can see my house is on the corner of Chandler and Fairfield there, denoted with a little star. And I've highlighted a little section of the map, because all of those houses were developed and built about the same time, between 1905 and 1925. And yet, the north side of Fairfield Street is in Zone S1, and the south side, where I live, is in Zone S2, which seems to be causing me a little bit of problem, at least with the impermeable coverage. You can see that the lots below me to the south of Fairfield Street are quite a bit larger, those are the other S2 lots, and they're able to manage the setbacks and the coverage percentages a little easier, I think. But the south side of Fairfield Street unfortunately was developed in a time when the lots were small, and my lot is particularly small, I'm just over 6,000 square feet. So I'm seeking relief from setback in coverage requirements. As you noted before, my house had an existing, well, let me just say, it's a one-and-a-half-story bungalow, and the purpose of my wanting to add on to my home is to provide storage and organizational space on the first floor of living. Because I have a hip roof, there's not really an easy way for me to add on to the second floor, so my option is to add on to the first floor, which increases the footprint. The proposed addition would be of a closet for a bedroom and a mudroom off my kitchen, totaling 240 square feet, which would render my whole home at 3, 1,300 square feet. The rear addition would not really be noticeable from Fairfield Street, but to the sides, my neighbors would see a difference of about eight feet in extension with the new addition. These are some of the houses that are in my neighborhood. Hopefully you'll be able to see those, you can see that some of them are in S2, and some of them are in S1, depending on which side of the street they're on. And they all look remarkably similar, they all have remarkably similar lots, I already said that. What I noticed when I was looking at this presentation is that almost all of these are three-story, and many of these people have their bedrooms on the third floor. And one of them is even four-story, because it has a walkout basement. So my little tiny house is only a story and a half, and it's just really hard to have any store, there is no storage on the first floor as it stands, so that's what I'm hoping to add. Um, this page reinforces what I'm looking for and indicates, you can't see some of it because of your, because of the people that are in the meeting, and I can't find my cursor to close that. Um, I'm seeking a variance release, a relief for impervious coverage. Right now, I'm right under impervious coverage, I'm at like 39.7%, and I'll be going over the 40%, so that's a new non-conformity of 42.9%. The other non-conformities were pre-existing, but they do get increased, or at least the building coverage does. The home currently is at 25% building coverage, and it would go up to 31 or 30.2%. So my setbacks are a disaster, because my house is tiny, and maybe the street wasn't as wide back in the day, I don't know. I have two frontages, because I'm on the corner, and both are non-conforming. The lot size is non-conforming, my east side is non-conforming. Everything about my house pretty much is non-conforming. The proposed addition would increase the gross floor plan of my home by 22.6%. Somewhere I had read in the bylaws that it couldn't be over 25%, so at least that seems within reason. Here's a picture of the plot plan that was done for this appeal, it shows the existing house with the hashed marks in the garage and the shed. And then the dark gray is the proposed addition. And the little chart on the left just shows what's allowed, what's existing, and the proposed, the two categories where there would be an increase in non-conformity. The next page has pictures of my house, so the upper left-hand picture is my house from Chandler Street. It shows my current 10-by-10 deck, and then there's a little post in the ground that indicates how far the new addition would go, because it would be 12 feet out instead of 10 feet. The upper right shows the back of my house, my little deck with the stairs going down to the patio. The middle one on the right there, the orange line shows where the proposed addition would go to, and also a little rehab on the egress from my basement to make it more in keeping with the updated look of the house. And then the white there, it was a proposed deck, I'm not entirely sure that the proposed deck makes sense there, I'll show that on the next page. So this is a sketch, on the left is the top-down view that shows the existing house, and then the proposed area in yellow. The proposed deck runs along the very back of the addition, and I had only made it six feet deep, because I thought I had to be 35 feet in from the back fence, and didn't realize it was a side as opposed to a back, since I'm on a quarter. But I do think it's a little tight to the garage there, so it might make more sense to take that same 120 square feet of deck and make a squarer deck, so that you could get through there with a lawnmower, etc. On the right-hand side, the lower picture is the sketch of my house as it now is now, and the upper picture is a sketch of what was proposed. The new roof would start at the dormer from the attic and come down at a little bit of a flatter slope. Still maintaining the large eaves overhangs to maintain the character of the home, the character of the neighborhood. And I don't know if you can see it, because I can't see it there, but also the little egress dormer off the basement has a more in-keeping kind of roofline, and windows on that back bedroom adjusted to accommodate that. So I included my justification statement in here, I don't know that you necessarily need me to go through that, but I included it in case there were questions from it, so that I could reference it while I was online with you. The one thing that I will note from that is that I was hoping to put a foundation underneath this addition, so if the addition was able to go forward, there would be a 12-by-20 basement underneath the first floor addition. Make it a little sturdier. The impact to the neighborhood should be minimal, everything should be in keeping with the style of the house. And the use of the house wouldn't change at all, there wouldn't be any additional pull on sewage or water, because there's no bathroom or sinks included. It's strictly storage space, it wouldn't add any extra bedrooms. And then there were some questions in here about changes to traffic patterns, sidewalks, things like that, none of that would be impacted, because it is all encompassed within the confines of my backyard. I mentioned before that my setback on Chandler Street is non-conforming, because I'm only at 16.6 feet or 16.9 feet, depending on where you measure it. The new addition would follow that line or be inside that line, it would not make a further non-conformity. The same thing would happen on the east side of my house, non-conforming right now, it's at 12.7 feet from the property line, and it would be in either extending along that same line or inside, so that it would not be furthering the non-conformity. I don't think I had anything else on my last page, I just had my 6,000 square foot lot, and my frontages, and my percentages, in case I needed to reference those. So I don't know if you have any questions for me? I'm hoping that's the kind of information that you were looking for at this meeting.
Well, thank you, you did a very thorough job of putting the numbers together. So if, if I could have the share screen? If you could release it, so I could have it?
How do I do that? I, for some reason, I cannot see my.
I think it's up at the top to release the shares.
Yeah, it is, I just can't see my cursor, so I just try, there you go, awesome.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Now, what I would like to do is simply give you the numbers, because I'm, I'm a table person. So I, I put the numbers in a table.
Okay.
And so if I can figure this out, I don't need all that, no, no, it went the wrong way, back over here. No, I don't want to do that, so I close, close that out. This is challenging, sorry, but it is. So if I go back to show what I wanted to do, and put that here, and make it full screen, and then do the share screen, and say I want to show that, and say share.
There you go.
All right, this is the numbers that I gathered from going through your application.
Okay.
And you're beyond the, the criteria, or less than a criteria, I guess, for area, frontage on the two fronts, and on the width, although width isn't much.
Right.
And then on the front setback, you're short on that, and on the other front setback, you're short. And on the side, one of the, the other side, you're short.
Yes.
And you're already over the maximum building coverage, although you're just at the edge on the impervious coverage. And my interpretation for what you're proposing is that one of the side setbacks, the pseudo-front, if you will, this side dug on the side street.
Yep.
You're, you're right at the edge there, and you want to extend the other side, and the building coverage, you're going from 25 to 30%, and you're taking the impervious coverage up to 42. This is under the S2 numbers. I didn't type it out for the S1 numbers, but the 15% going to 25, going to 32 would still be there, because S1 is only a 15% requirement.
Right.
The impervious, yeah, you sneak in, because impervious wants 60%. And then the other numbers are basically, as I highlighted that, well, no, the width goes down to 80 feet, so you're okay on the width on an S1.
Yeah, right.
So that's, that's my interpretation of what I've got. And of, of your case, so I'm gonna ask the other board members if they have any questions. Don't forget to unmute.
The board all should be unmuted, Mr. Chair.
I see a bunch of red X's.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Nice. So John, Paige, Brad, Jerry, Leslie, any questions?
I'm good.
John's okay, Paige, you're shaking your head, is that a yes or a no, or no questions? No questions, okay, I red lips. Leslie?
Um, hmm. Well, I'm wondering, you're thinking of putting in a basement. Are you gonna have to do any drilling to, like, remove rock matter, or?
Um, I'm not sure that I know that, when I talked to the contractor, he said we would need to go down four feet anyways to create footings, and my house sits high, my foundation is high. So he said it wouldn't take very much more than those four feet to go down to create the foundation, to have a basement, because my house sits up, oh, I don't know, maybe, maybe three, four feet above the ground level with the basement. So it wasn't gonna have to go down a full, like, 10 feet in order to add that foundational piece.
And you can't?
I mean, I don't have to do it, but, um, I think it would make it sturdier, and it would add more storage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it definitely would add more storage. Would you need to, with all that additional storage, would you need to have such a, a large addition put on the back? That can accommodate some of the?
Um, so the addition that goes on the back is essentially a closet to go off of the first floor bedroom, which was an addition at some point to the home that sticks out, so the addition just meets up with that, that's where those numbers came from, just to like square off the back of the house. I suppose I could put my clothes in the basement, but the idea was to be able to have my clothes off of my bedroom. And then the kitchen is a problem, because it has one pan drawer. So part of the reason for wanting to have a mudroom off the kitchen was to be able to have pots and pans available to the kitchen, they are in the basement now, so I do go to the basement to get them when I need to cook something. But it would be really helpful to have some sort of closet space on the first floor. Unfortunately, the attic, that half-story attic is not, not properly insulated, so it's available for storage, but not for living space, so I do have some storage upstairs. But it would be great to have pots and pans, like, actually attached to the kitchen space, and clothes attached to the bedroom space.
So I, I see Bill with his hand up. Bill, you have a comment or a question here?
Uh, just a point of clarification, Mr. Chair, if I may. Um, the adjacent properties on the north side are actually general residential for the, and I believe that probably accounted for the, the reason this lot is undersized compared to what's required for the S2 district. It's approximately 30% of the necessary area for a conforming lot in the S2 area. So just, the board has a kind of idea how that may have happened, and I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. I tried to figure out last night, like, what a conforming house would be on this lot, but the lot is so small that it, it would be like a shotgun one-room, I don't know what it would be.
Any other comments, questions from the board members? Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this application? You're muted, Mr. Nemser.
Oh, sorry, we should probably open the public hearing, and then we can close it after, if there's no comments.
All right, so we're opening the public hearing to hear comments from the public. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of this application? And I, I can only see one page at a time, so I don't know if anybody has their hand raised here.
I don't see any hands up, several of my neighbors said they were gonna be on here to speak on my behalf, but I don't, I don't see any hands up, so.
All right, is anybody wish to speak in opposition to this application? And again, I don't see any hands up. So I would assume that it is silent on that. So, Bill, just to make sure I'm doing this properly, now I closed the public comment period, is that right?
That's correct.
All right, so I'm closing the public comment period. You want me to do that as a vote, or just say that I close it?
I would recommend you do it as a vote, and then you can continue.
Lisa says I don't have to vote.
The, the chair has a right to close it.
Thank you, Lisa, I like that. So let's go into our discussion, we have closed the public comment period of this hearing. So, board members. Thoughts, comments? That's not enough, Leslie, I need more than that.
And, and I hate to be so silent, but I don't see a problem with it. I just don't. Go ahead, Leslie.
Oh, well, when I bought my house, I bought what would essentially be the twin of this house, and I've added on to it twice with the approval of the zoning board. It would certainly not be nice of me to deny somebody else the ability to make their house livable. You do not want your clothes in the basement.
I don't like them in the attic either, but that's where they are right now.
Yeah.
All, all right, but let's go on with the board members deliberation. John, Brad, Paige, any comments? John, you're on mute again. Brad, you're, you're shaking your hands, are you stuck on mute?
You are. Yeah, if we put ourselves on mute, we can't take ourselves off mute. That, that's the trick, I just learned the hard way.
Yeah, that was my mistake as well.
Oh, okay, now, now we're live again, thank you. So the issue is, you folks see no issues for this application? So if that's the case, I think we're gonna need a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chair, if I may, what we should do is run over the criteria for variance.
Ah, thank you, you keep keeping me on track, I appreciate that.
Happy to, and we're gonna go over real quick, and what the board needs to do is, we're gonna go over three, the three basic components of variance. Board will determine what, how each is met. Or, and then the board will determine whether the request is consistent with the variance, and lastly, if they decide it is or is not, you're gonna have a vote. So the first, the first is that the permit granting authority finds that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography of land or structures, and especially affecting land or structures that do not generally affect the zoning district in which it is located.
Well, that's an interesting one to comment on, Bill. I'd like some feedback from the other board members on that. Because that land is on a gently sloping hill, as I recall. And it is, there's no issue with soil conditions. There's no minor, major issue with the topography. And I don't know what they mean by the shape of the land, or the structures.
Well, the shape of land is, is, in this case, I would say grossly undersized for the district.
You're talking the parcel, not the land.
Shape of parcel.
Yeah, okay, so that's, that's an issue that, you know, it's hard to pull out of this one. Of land or structures not affecting generally the zoning district it is located in, but is affecting this one. So how do we resolve that? Board members, comments? It's a small lot, yes, but as the comment was, the properties are shuffled between a couple different zoning districts, depending on which side of the street they're on. And this is a small lot in a slightly larger district. Is that enough to say, aha, we have an issue for item one?
Paul, I'm not, I'm not sure if I fully understand what you just said.
All right, let me, let me do a screen share on this, I think I can make it work now.
I can do the staff report too, if it's easier, Mr. Chair.
That's, this is what I'm gonna share right here. Participants can now see my screen, we're talking item one. The permit granting authority finds that owing to the circumstances of the soil conditions, the shape or topography of the land or structures that affect that land or structure, but not the general zoning district.
Can I share something on that? When I first read that, I thought they were talking about things like runoff, so I had put in my request that I have a curb along the edge that makes the runoff. So I had put in my request that I have a curb along the edge that makes the runoff go either down to the cul-de-sac or down Fairfield Street, because I thought that's what they were talking about there, the conditions of the soil and the neighborhood. And would my, would my addition impact the neighborhood and their soil conditions? And I, I could only think of runoff. I don't know if that's correct, but.
That, that's an interesting add-on. I had not considered runoff.
Think the land might have like applying the case of something like a weird dog leg or something. I'm not sure that they mean small.
So let, can we just pause on that for a moment and knock off the other two? We'll come back to number one in a minute. A literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. And note that it is not a personal nature, but connected to the property. And I'm thinking here, we don't have an issue. I don't see that a literal enforcement would involve substantial hardship.
Well, how can you separate? That's a very bizarre um. And until or otherwise to the petitioner. And then say that it's not of a personal nature.
Yeah, when we're talking a substantial hardship, she's in the property now and has been in there for several years. And so she's trying to make it easier on her. It's not going to make it harder. So that's, that's another challenge. So let's go to number three. That desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance or bylaw. To me, that's the easiest one to say. Easy, right? Um, we're not impacting anybody else. And we're not derogating from the intent of the bylaw. Yeah, it's a, it's an oversized structure on an undersized lot. But as she pointed out, that's the neighborhood. It's, it's sort of a hodgepodge of stuff. Probably the houses were there before the zoning went into effect. And so we agree on number three, I would guess. And so let's go back to number one. That specifically finding to the circumstances related to the soil, the topography or shape of the land, the shape, if we talk about the parcel, it's a pseudo rectangle, trapezoidal, but sort of like a rectangle. And the topography, as I said, gently sloping. And is there anything there to the shape? And I would say maybe it's the size. But all the district pieces are small there.
Mr. Chair, may I comment on that?
Please.
Uh, I would say that this is a a property that was designated as an S two in clearly uh, an erroneous designation. Uh, S two parcel requires twenty thousand square feet. Uh, this parcel is, as we said, about thirty percent of that size. Um, I would say that, that does not, that restriction, the small size does not generally affect uh, other properties in the zoning district, the, the S two zoning district because of the requirement in the zoning bylaws for twenty thousand square foot lot.
Um, go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's well under the allowed size. Uh, and she's looking to modify the configuration of the, of the building on the property. But it isn't like she has one of the larger lots and is looking to expand, you know, the residence on a larger lot. She's looking to just expand a small footprint uh, adjustment. That's it. I'm good with that. I don't think it has any uh, bearing on any of the other uh, budding or any other lot in the neighborhood, in my opinion.
Okay. And so item two, then, a literal enforcement would involve substantial hardship. Any thoughts on that?
Sure, I'm, I'm sorry, I had my hand up, but I don't think.
I didn't see you. I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't think it was noticed. I was just, I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, but I think when you uh, showed your table earlier, which was very helpful with looking at the, comparing it to the S one district. Do we know if this, just for comparison sake and another data point, how, whether this proposal would comply with the the zoning district that's to the north of Fairfield Street and the requirements of that zone, I think it.
And that's, that's the S one district, right, Bill?
Okay.
No, it is the general residence.
General.
Right, seven thousand square foot lot required. So the answer is no.
Or the side, are the side setback, side and front setbacks the same as well?
Uh, no, the side, uh.
General residence side setback is fifteen feet and the rear is fifteen feet. She's okay on the rear and the side, it's the same for S one, S two and general.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
So if I, you want me to put that chart back up again?
I thi- I think it's a helpful for context. It does seem that the that it would be more appropriately classified in the other zoning districts.
Let's see if I can find it again. All right. So I got that. And so let's do the screen share there. And then I say, share. All right. So there's against S two. The red ones are where there's a conflict. And the difference between S two and you said S one is instead of twenty thousand, it's ten thousand for that first line item. It's a hundred instead of a hundred and thirty. And it's eighty instead of a hundred and four. So the width becomes acceptable for that one uh, side measurement or length or whatever they call. And then it's twenty-five, thirty and fifteen for the requirements. That's the same. And then the building coverage is fifteen and sixty instead of fifteen and forty.
Oh, wow, sixty, okay.
So we're still conflicted here on the building coverage regardless, but we sneak in on the impervious coverage. I should have expanded the table. This is just an image from an old spreadsheet, so I, I can't really edit it to put all those extra numbers in. Sorry about that.
Interesting, the impervious coverage number increases so much, but the building coverage doesn't necessarily.
I think that goes with the reduction of the square footage. You cut the square footage in half. And so, you know, a smaller yard area. So that, that's where we're, we're at. Um.
That's for number two. Mr. Chair, you're, you're, you're considering number two still, correct?
I think so. Let me, let me go back to see if I could find that document. Oh, there's so many documents here. No, it's not that one. Sorry. I dropped this guy down. There he is. So let's screen share that again. Did I do it? Oh, no, I gotta push another button. There we go. All right. So there's the items again. Literal enforcement would involve hardship.
Uh, may I offer uh, something for the board to chew on?
Sure.
Uh, this lot being designated S two has limited uh, improvements that uh, would be uh, available under uh, because of the non-conformity. That would financially uh, be detrimental uh, for that house compared to other houses in the S two district that had a more um, significant uh, square footage on lots. So there's only so many ways the op- that the applicant would be able to do that. So I would suggest that that would be a possibility. The, the financial hardship caused by the limited possibilities to uh, make improvements to the property on par with other units uh, in the S two zoning district.
Well, when I first read this application, I got struck with the amount of coverage that's there now versus what the limits are for that district. And the thought that hit me was McMansion. You know, you can always build more and more, but at some point you're gonna run out of room. And this house is already much larger than the district would allow.
So my house is only a thousand square feet. And the footprint is only seven hundred and fifty square feet, like two hundred and fifty of that is.
I, I, I understand.
Okay.
What I'm saying is I'm going on to percent footprint coverage. That it is significantly over what is required in an S two. Well, it violates all the rules of an S two, so it's probably not an S two. But even an S one gives it some challenges. But I'm just saying, when I first read this, it looked like you're, you're putting a bigger building on a tiny lot that's beyond what the rules require. And yeah, I understand all of your, your, your challenges here, and I like what Bill is saying. But I'm just giving, you know, my first gut answer before I get into the details of it. And then exploring the neighborhood properties and so on. So that's my spin on it. I'm just one of however many folks we got here tonight. I think we have, what, six of us on board. We need for a vote, we have, what is it, five voting members, Bill?
That's correct. And this is a variance which requires, it would require four or five.
Okay. And who is the alternate that is not voting?
Brad, that'd be me.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify where we stand here. Of the five voting members, you need four in an affirmative situation to get your, your variance. So where do we stand? We stand struggling with clarifying the requirements of one, two and three. And so I, I'm just the chairman of the board. I'm the one that talks too much. So if, if you folks would come up with an answer that owing to the circumstances or the literal enforcement or desirable relief may be granted. A, B or C, one, two or three?
Well, number two makes me think that that needs to be rewritten because.
That state, yeah, that state statute, that's not our um. That's, yeah, that's not. Yeah, I.
I don't know how you can separate a hardship from anything personal. It's all personal. You know, I imagine like if somebody needs to modify their property because now they're in a handy, they're handicapped and they need to put up a ramp. Other than that, like.
You're correct, Leslie. That, that's, I've been on courses, I think, um, I believe Lisa probably taught it at one point. Um, but tha- that is generally accepted to mean, when you say a personal nature, it should do with the people rather than the property.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I mean, uh, it didn't we just a month or so ago um, grant? I don't know if it was a variance or what, for somebody who was in a tiny house on Main Street. Because she didn't have any storage for her rakes and stuff like that. So I don't know how that would be any different from this person has to keep her pots and pans in the basement.
Well, it's, right, in this trip.
To me, this is a, a, a change of lifestyle, because when the building was constructed almost a century ago, people lived in it for a hundred years. And now we're getting a request to expand the building because of a change in lifestyle. That's, that's the way I see it. And I'm not saying that's good or bad. I'm just seeing that people's activities in a structure have changed in the last century.
And the zoning district was not, in the last century, was not applicable. You know, the zoning district came about, you know, whenever it came about, but certainly not a century ago.
Yeah. So I, I would like you uh, board members, even Brad, he, he can contribute and then watch the, the dust settle. As to how to, as to how to phrase these, our responses to these three criteria.
Um, could, could I have made that comment?
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Um, I don't think that uh, number one has anything to do with this um, uh, this uh, various that they're asking for. Um, number two, I think certainly does have um, a financial hardship. And because if you look at the, the property itself, um, much of the house is not really able to be used. Um, because of the, the shape of the roof, the hip roof and everything like, like that. Um, I think that uh, in terms of trying to um, uh, in appreciate that property, um, as, as uh, other properties in the neighborhood would appreciate. Um, this one would not because um, of its, of its certain size and uh, and, and you know, lack of storage and lack of basement room. Um, so I think that there is a financial hardship, um, but I don't think it's necessarily personal. Um, financial hardship. Um, the property should be able to be improved. Um, and I think that the um, proposal for, for, for doing this um, is not significantly changing. I mean, they're, they're basically filling in the squares and adding a little bit more to it. Um, so I think that that, um, that makes sense. And I think it would uh, improve the property and um, make it a more valuable to the town of Maynard and uh, and to the owner. Um, as far as to number three goes, um, I think that falls in with number two, where um, improving the property and um, and making it uh, more valuable is something that is in the best interest of the town.
So you're very close to saying what the findings are, Brad. Could you rephrase that to give findings for one, two and three?
Um, one, I'm, um, I don't, I wouldn't have a finding on number one.
I mean, the board must determine.
Is it required, is it required that we, that all three of these things have to?
It is.
Yeah, read, read the pre- the prefix sentence there. Board must determine for each.
Will determine in the affirmative for each. Yeah, I don't, um, I don't see for number one how it even applies to this, because um, to have soil conditions or the shape of the, you know, of the property um, require, you know, you need to have some problems with the, with the land to, to have a variance. Does it make sense with this?
The only thing I can come up with is if the shape is the shape of the parcel and that it is so much smaller than the adjacent parcels. But then again, that means it's in violation because it's even, even for general residents, it's too small a parcel.
Yeah, I, I mean, if you, if you look at the other, uh, on the map, it looks like they're all fairly close to the same size.
Yeah.
On that street they are, but not in the S two zoning district.
No, but I mean, all the ones that are all, all, all in that.
On that, on that one street. It's true.
Right, exactly. They're all.
But, but the, 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 the way the um, statute reads is zoning district, not generally affecting the zoning district. And I would, I, I, my opinion is uh, if we were doing this today and dropping S two zoning district, we would say this is not an appropriate area to do that, because we're gonna end up with problems like this with every one of those houses that's on the Fairfield. That'd be my opinion.
But, but that's not where we're at right now, so.
All right. So we're having a problem answering number one?
Yeah. Paul, can I throw something in for that one? Just thinking.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Uh, from my past history on this, um. Not modifying or changing anything with the shape or topography of the land. They don't, she doesn't need to build a retaining wall for any runoff going into a neighbor's property. I'm thinking of that because I've been in places where a retaining wall should have been built. I'm thinking of that because I've been places where a retaining wall should have been built and all the runoff flooded someone else's basement. That's what I was thinking. Um, that's what I was thinking, and every modification coming up is not gonna affect anything going anywhere. Like you said, the runoff's going down the street, uh, as it always is, uh. The shape isn't changing, the soil isn't changing. Uh, as far as that goes, I would say no issue with number one.
So you're writing the finding for number one, then?
There are no issues with number one.
Correct. I won't, I hope that'll fly. And so Brad, are you gonna come up with a finding for number two and three then?
Um, well, let me try number two to start. Um, I think that, um, that there would be um substantial um substantial hardship, financial hardship um by not allowing um, this variance to go through. Because of um the size and the size of the house in compared to um, and value of the house compared to its neighbors on the street.
Okay, about number three?
Um, yes, I believe that um the relief should be granted. Um, because um it does increase the values of of the properties around them. And it is good for the public, uh, it is, excuse me, is in the public good to um to um increase the values of the neighborhood and the housing thereof.
Okay, if we substitute the board finds as the beginning of each one of your sentences, John and Brad. We're there, right?
Sounds like it to me.
Good. So now, Bill, can I ask for a motion?
Uh, I'd like to, what I'd like to do now is clo- if we close the public hearing, no new information. Uh, then we get the motion. Uh, and with the motion would be that their board uh makes a determination if the criteria exists. And then a board vote to approve the variance if that's what they choose.
All right, so I'm closing the public hearing. But don't I, don't I do that after we've closed the discussion and everything? We've closed the public comments. But now you want to close the public hearing?
Right, no new.
Lisa, do you, did I say it right? Did did Bill say it right?
You can do it, you can do it either way, Mr. Chair. You can close the public hearing before you vote or after you vote. Either one is fine.
Thank you. I've always confused on that one, I'm sorry. All right, so we'll close the public hearing and then we will have a motion. Or do we want to have the motion first and then close the public hearing? Let's do the motion first. Who's gonna make the motion, please? Brad, if you do it, then you can do it and not worry about the vote.
Is that okay, Lisa?
Have one of the voting members, uh, Mr. Chairman, make the motion.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, Red.
So, other than Brad, could somebody make the motion?
I'll just sit here in the corner.
I could try it as a general motion and see if this meets the need, but I uh move that the request does meet the criteria for a variance, the three criteria um regarding the circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, or topography in the land or structures that affect such land or structures, but not the general zoning district. That a literal enforcement, the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve a substantial financial hardship. And that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or dericating from the intent or purpose of the ordinance or bylaw as previously discussed. How's that?
The petitioner is requesting a variance from section five, one, four, nonconforming structures of the zoning bylaws to increase the building coverage and increase the existing impervious coverage. Is is part of this also to deal with any setback issues?
No, that this, that this is not, um.
There's no continuance of a of a setback? I thought there might have been.
It's not affected by this petition.
Uh, setbacks. Right, you're extending the side setback there. I think that one fits.
It not the variance, Mr. Chair. You're voting on the variance that that the building inspector, I believe, is allowed to make that call. So it's preexisting nonconforming structure, and so you're voting on the variance, the new non, the new creation of a new nonconformity.
All right, thank you. I'm awful glad you're here today, Lisa.
I'm glad you worth it.
All right, so we got Paige's um motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Jerry will second. And now I need to call the roll call. First, do we have any extra discussion on this? No, no extra discussion. John, what's your pleasure? Yes or no?
Yes.
Paige? Paige, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. We're skipping Brad. Leslie?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
All right, and if I'm to vote, because I need the extra vote, I can say yes as well. So it is unanimous after all of that. And so what I do at this point, uh, Betsy is to have Bill describe what happens next in the timeline.
Betsy, what what will happen after this? Oh, I'm sorry, Paige.
Do we need, I don't know if my prior motion actually included the vote to approve. I think it may have just been confirming that it meets the criteria. I don't know if that needs to be a separate vote.
Oh, I thought you wrapped it as one. Okay, yeah, then that would be correct. This is one, okay.
But I moved to uh approve the variance as depicted in their application that states stamped April third, twenty twenty three.
All right, I second what Paige just said.
All right, so let's revote to make sure we're clear on this. John?
Yes.
Uh, Paige?
Yes, sorry.
Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. Thank you for clarifying that. I missed that fine detail. Bill?
If you close the hearing, Mr. Chair, I can.
Oh, yes, we'll close the hearing. Thank you. Public hearing on this case is closed. All right, Bill?
Um, Betsy, what happens is that I I will go ahead and draft up a a decision. It usually takes less than a week. Um, at that point, um, the board will have an opportunity to um review, and once it's executed, um, in this case, it'll be by the chair. Uh, we will um file it with the clerk, the town clerk. And there's a twenty day appeal period. Um, and I will take care of everything else uh with you via email. But um, you do not are not able to pull permits until the um the uh, the certificate of no appeal is filed by the clerk, which is after twenty days. And uh, you have any questions, you can absolutely reach out, you know, to my office, of course. And thank you for your, it was a uh nice that somebody put a presentation like this together, and I hope my little information sheet helped a little bit on that.
That was very informative. Thank you, Betsy. So moving on to our next hearing. This is Twenty Five Great Road. And this is a uh hearing to hear all persons interested in the special permit application filed by Mike Mark Heard, didn't Twenty Five Great Road. The subject property Twenty Five Great Road is a noncon family, not nonconforming, single-family dwelling in an S one, single-family residence district. The applicant is requesting a special permit extending the existing side yard nonconformity. Fifteen feet required. It's now eleven point seven feet to construct an addition to the residence. And so I would request the petitioner, if you could find yourself here and unmute or have Bill help you unmute.
Bill's got me.
All right.
Awesome. And um my wife Randy is also on the call, so.
As soon as I find her, I will unmute her.
Thanks.
He's hiding.
We're both on camera.
So if you could e- explain what your request is for?
Certainly. Thanks, Mr. Chairman and board members. Appreciate the uh time tonight. So uh, I don't have a presentation like Betsy. That was really impressive. I do, I just have the drawing, so I'll get to that in a minute. But what we we want to do is we, uh, when we purchased the house, uh, Twenty Five Great Road, uh, which is like a lot of houses, built a long time ago, about a hundred years ago, that someone had at some point constructed a small mudroom that kind of kicked off the back of the house. Uh, and it was used as a sort of, it was enclosed, used as a laundry. And unfortunately, it it wasn't constructed very well. And so the the concrete, it was built on kind of a set of concrete steps that were crumbling and were home to a lot of rodents. And as well, uh, because it was off, it wasn't it wasn't uh the congruent to the side of the house. It was, it was set in a a few inches like uh described in the permit. And that was causing water uh to leak into the, at the corner of the house, into the, into our basement. So uh, we are undertaking a renovation to destroy that structure, put a new uh laundry and a half bath there. And that would, uh, but what we wanted is to continue it straight along with the line of the existing house. Now the, oh, maybe, can I share here? I'll share the.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks. Let me share the. I want to see that. It's it's the plot plan. Great.
Yeah.
Great. So as you can see, the the house is built at an angle on the lot. And so Fletcher Street goes, you know, of course, over here with Twenty Three Great Road on the other side of us and Twenty Seven, which is here along this property line. Um. And and you can see the, this is this original little kickout uh laundry, which uh and then the the addition, you can see would go here, continued straight line, just be this red area. And then we're gonna put a little deck in. And so the encroachment area is right, right here, along the property line to between us and uh Twenty Seven Great Road. And so, you know, again, kind of just the way the house is canted on the lot. Uh, really kind of, and plus the house was built out of out of uh compliance. It's it's the entire house. It's too close to the lot line. Uh, but anyway, so we we talked with uh the neighbors there uh, at Twenty Seven Great Road, who would really be the most affected, but we also talked with our other neighbors uh, just ar- around Fletcher Street. And everyone, including the the neighbors that actually would be the most potentially impacted are are supportive. I mean, as you can see, the the driveway sits right here, along here, along this, along the actual property line, there's, there's a uh little chain link fence and then shrubbery sit just on on our, on our neighbor's lot. So there's visually, they don't see anything. There won't be anything different uh from doing this uh addition. And so one, we think, so the the neighbors that are most potentially impacted don't care. They won't notice any difference. It's gonna make the neighborhood a lot nicer. Uh, I don't know if you know the house, everyone's, you know, seen it, but the back of this house and this little building were not that visually attractive. Uh, and so now we're gonna do something much nicer uh that we think will really uh really improve the value of of the entire neighborhood, the existing homes around it. Uh, and the encroachment is effectively, it is pretty minimal. Uh, so, but that's why we're here. And that's uh, that's what we're asking uh tonight.
Thank you. Um, question that I have is on the adjacent property where you have your mouse hung up there next to the driveway?
Yes.
How close is the house to that driveway? And the property.
Why don't, I don't have the distance exactly, but in between here, so there's shr- shrubbery, high trees. And then their driveway and then their house. So in between, so their house isn't right here. It's their driveway and then their house.
All right, so there's a double driveway there, one for each of you?
That's right.
Okay, that helps. Thank you. Any questions from board members?
Oh, um, what's uh, I don't know, I'm sure if I had better eyesight, I could tell, but what is the maximum amount of encroachment? You know, cause your, your house is at an angle. Oh, I see it's.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So that.
Looks like half a foot.
Yeah, it's six inches. That's right.
Any other questions, please, from the board? Boy, we have a quiet night tonight. Um. What else was I gonna say? We, you know, just following up Bill's requirement of protocol. I opened up the staff report and there's a whole bunch of things here that we have to consider. And so I can share.
I'll stop sharing.
Yeah, you stop sharing and then I'll click the button on my side.
Mr. Chair, dude, there may be public comment as well. I'm not sure because we do have a large group, so.
That's right. So you you keep me on track. That's that's for sure. Um. There were some comments in favor that are loaded on the website. Uh, we have three letters of support listed here from Tonya and Scott Gomes.
Who are online. They're here.
And from Catherine Look and James Early. And from Matthew Joanne. Sorry if I mess up the names, but that's, we have three speaking in favor. And so, um, is there anybody else? Open up the public comment period here. Is there anybody else that wants to speak or expand on the emails that were sent through? I'm not hearing anything. All right, anybody want to speak in opposition? And I'm not hearing anything. So basically, now, now can I share my screen, Bill?
Yep, if you wanna, yeah, you can close public comment and share it.
I just have to find what I want to show.
And I can share too, if it's easier, Mr. Chair.
Well, I have to learn how to do this.
Right, teach a man to fish.
Yep. And so if I can do the screen share and click on this, what we have to determine is those six characteristics. If adverse effects do not outweigh its beneficial impacts in view of the characteristics of the site and the proposal in relation to that site. And that determination includes consideration of each of the following. Social, economic, community needs, traffic and parking, adequacy of public surface, neighborhood character, impacts on the environment and fiscal impact. So, did I share all the way? I'm sorry.
No.
Got to click another button. See, I'm learning. Takes a while. So it's those six characteristics that we need to consider.
Right.
And just to start the ball rolling, I would suggest that six inches of additional encroachment is de minimis for all of these, if any impact at all.
Mm hmm.
I agree.
I agree, yeah. And what you're finding, uh, board is that the the effects of the proposed use would not outweigh the um the impact, the beneficial impacts to the town or the neighborhood. That's the purpose of all these.
Yes, I believe that's, that's what we're looking at. So if we're in agreement, I think we can dispense with this in short order. So we'll come up. Now we'll come up with a motion, then close. the public comment period. Are we close? I'm getting confused on this. I'm sorry.
I, well, you could, you, you, if you, the, you can close the public comment yourself.
All right. As we said, I'll close the comment, public comment period on this case.
And then the board could combine a vote in this, um, where they, there's a determination that the above, uh, the, the criteria has been met. Um, for the subject property as required. And, um, a vote if you want to, uh, if the board chooses to approve construction of the addition as, uh, depicted in the application.
Sounds good. You should be on the board, Bill. So I need somebody to make such a motion?
Well, I can give it a shot.
Please.
Um, I make a motion that we grant the, um, application for special permit at twenty-five Great Road for the construction of an addition. Uh, given that, uh, such addition, uh, or granting such an addition, um, does not, um, impact, I mean, the impact of such an addition does not outweigh. Of it does not outweigh the benefits. Did I get that backwards? I don't know. Um, and that the criteria of the, uh, six, uh, things which must be determined are de minimis. Um, I mean, that, uh, yeah, the, because it's only six inches, uh, it's determined that those are of de minimis concern.
Do I get a second?
I can.
Jerry will second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor. John?
Yes.
Paige? Paige, you're probably on mute.
Yes.
Uh, Leslie?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well.
Okay, Mr. Chair, now if you're going to have a separate, a, a, a second vote for the actual special permit to allow the construction of the addition.
Oh, okay.
That was just the determination that the criteria was met. Sorry. Unless I missed, unless I missed it, Leslie, wasn't it? It was just.
Oh, I thought I was giving you like the whole package.
That's what I thought.
I'll do it again. Bill likes to have me in the spotlight here. So go ahead. Somebody make another motion.
Um, I make a motion that we grant the special permit. To extend the side yard, uh, non-conformity at twenty-five Great Road.
Per the construction documents that we have been reviewing.
Okay, there you go.
So do we get a second?
I can.
Jerry seconds. Any further comment? No. John?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
And I'm yes as well. Okay, so now we have closed the public hearing. And Bill, you can tell the applicant what's next.
Okay, to be clear, the board's going to close the public hearing at this point?
Yeah, I did, didn't I?
Yeah, I would close a comment, but
Oh, I close a public hearing, yes.
Um, okay, uh, yes, uh, I will be, uh, in touch via email, just the same as I did for Betsy earlier. Uh, we'll draft up a decision, um, and once it is completed, uh, and signed, uh, it will be recorded with the, uh, the town clerk and there will be a 20-day appeal period and then, uh, barring any appeals, you can go right to building permits. If you have any questions, I know we're kind of, uh, we're going a little faster tonight, believe it or not. And, um, but you have any questions, you, you know how to reach me at the office and we'll be happy to help you any way we can, but, but we'll, uh, you, you should hear from us within a week that the, uh, decision has been recorded.
Thank you. So moving on to our next public hearing, this is one twenty-three Summer Street. This is a special permit renewal application filed by Andy Marlin and Donna Dotson, one twenty-three Summer Street, Maynard. The subject property at one twenty-three Summer Street is located in the S1 zoning district. Consistent with sections three, two, five, and ten, two of the zoning bylaws, the petitioner is requesting renewal of the special permit allowing a trade shop use parentheses artist studio within the subject property. This was originally approved September eighth, twenty twenty-two. And so before we get into the details of it, I just wanted to make sure that I've introduced Lisa Mead, Town Council. Because this case has some confusing, uh, issues with bylaws and so forth. And I wanted to be sure that she's available if we have any questions on that, just to make sure that we're clear. The status of the bylaw adoption since town vote had approved a new bylaw that could regard, could, could impact this. My understanding that has not been approved by, uh, who approves it there in the state?
The Attorney General's Office.
Attorney General's Office. Thank you. That has not happened yet. So we are still operating underneath the, uh, existing bylaws on this matter. So the existing permit that is out there has a series of conditions of approval. And so before I get, uh, the petitioner on, on the microphone here, I just wanted to iterate uh, what the conditions of approval are for this last year of the trade shop. It says, A, that all trade shop activities shall occur in the barn slash studio. All noise generating activities associated with the trade shop use shall be conducted within the studio. Noise levels should be controlled to be minimally detectable outside of the studio. The window fan dust exhaust system must not be used. A conventional dust control system should be used as needed. All vapor generating activities associated with the trade shop shall be conducted within the studio. Hours indoors for noise generating activities are nine AM to five PM, Monday through Saturday and Sunday, twelve to five PM. No outdoor activities related to trade shop are permitted. No chainsawing, bamboo splitting, or similar noise generating activities. No painting or other odor generating activities. No stockpiling of merchandise, no work in progress or finished items or raw materials shall be stored outside. Normal lawn, yard, and garden maintenance activity associated with the residence are permitted, including but not limited to lawn mowing, hedge trimming, snow removal. This permit and these conditions relate solely to the trade shop use. Vapors and fumes are to be collected in a hood system and not exhausted to the outside of the studio. No exhaust duct is to be discharged to the outside. Mitigated levels of vapors are to be confirmed after the control devices are installed and before vaporous materials are used on a regular basis. All use, storage, and quantities of hazardous materials must be consistent with the Board of Health and Fire Department regulations. Up to two interns are permitted on site for a maximum of four hours each day. There shall be no employees except the occasional worker to assist in loading and unloading or moving materials to and from the barn and/or to perform tasks inside the barn. Trade shop related showings and events shall be limited to two weekends a year, parentheses, Saturday and Sunday. For the purpose of this decision, a public invitation advertised or a private invitation to four or more individuals associated with the trade shop use shall consist, so constitute an event or a showing. All visitor parking shall be on the applicant's property. Hours shall be between nine and AM and five PM. All other restrictions to this permit will remain into effect. Deliveries by vehicles with three or more axles connected with the trade shop use shall be restricted to one per week. Delivery shall not occur on weekends or on federal holidays. All trucks shall be loaded and unloaded on the property and not in or on the public way. Light emitting from the storage room studios along the side of the barn must be mitigated by shades or other light blocking devices from dusk to dawn. There shall be no sign indicating a trade shop use. There is not time or day limitations on photography or videography working occurring inside the barn. And the special permit is valid for one year from the effective date of the decision. And if renewal is required, a new application must be filed with the ZBA. This is the hearing for that renewal. And so I would like to ask the petitioner to explain their renewal request. The petitioner, please unmute if you're still muted.
I will unmute them. Let me, uh, see. I'm here. Where did you go? There's the others. Okay. I think you should have it now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, um, to the ZBA board. Um, I'm Donna Dotson, one, two, three, Summer Street.
And I'm Andy Moreline, same address.
And also, um, our lawyer, David McKay, is joining us tonight to help answer any questions about our permit, the appeal, and the renewal. Um, so, yeah. Okay, so, um, first of all, thank you to all the members of the ZBA for granting us, um, our request for the, uh, public hearing and for taking the time tonight to review the materials that we have prepared for this continued hearing. Um, as you all know, and as the chair just read, um, the CBA granted us a special permit for an artist's studio and trade shop use at one, two, three, Summer Street after a lengthy public hearing process last year. You face a very difficult decision and we thank you for placing your trust in us. We take the work you invested last year very seriously and we have made the changes that were required by the board. We've operated our non-commercial artist studio since that date without any confirmed violations. Tonight, we're requesting a renewal of our special permit. As we all know, our special permit is under appeal by the Shoes who live at one, one, five, Summer Street. However, the town council has submitted a rebuttal to the Shoes' appeal to the State Superior Court, which asserts that this and our special permit is lawful, meaning the town of Maynard upholds the work of the ZBA and the individual board members. Furthermore, we've reached out to the Shoes to try and settle out of court, but they refused. So tonight, we're requesting a renewal of the special permit under the current conditions that the chair just read. According to the staff report, quote, "There are no confirmed violations of the standing special permit." The building commissioner, fire, and police chiefs reported no concerns about our extension. So now we'd like to share some pictures.
Do we share screen?
Can we share screen?
Thanks again for your effort and time on behalf of the town of Maynard. I understand very well how much committees take your time and your energy and your emotional investment. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to share some of the images of our compliance with the permit. I will be as brief as possible and I welcome any questions. Um, this image here shows the two heavy-duty commercial air filtration systems we have installed. Each one alone has the capacity to filter the entire studio space every forty-five minutes down to one micron. We find these efficient systems scrub our air stu- air, the air inside our studio very well. We add carbon filters when the vapor, when vapors are present, and that is only in use very occasionally. No window fan venting during the work operations, uh, release any odors or dust. As required, we installed shades on the wind, on the studio windows, but we did it on all sides of the building. This is the fence that, um, um, that faces the Tarduff Hart, this is the side of the house that faces the Tarduff Hart property. Note, we have also invested besides in the screen, um, an additional mitigation, stockade fence. This fence runs the length of the property, abutting the Tarduff and Hart property. And continues down along and separates us up from us from the Shoe Barn property. We have cooperated with this board in every step of this process and we've respected all conditions you have created in an effort to fairly address all the concerns of our art studio. If there have been any violations, I'm sure you would know about them. We live under a microscope. This is a picture taken from this, from our side door. Mr. Hart and Ms. Tardis have cameras that point directly into our home and driveway. Their second floor camera is seen here. It appears into our kitchen, bedroom, bathrooms, and personal vehicles. They capture footage of our friends and family who visit us, including our grandchildren and our friends' children and grandchildren, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. Another camera points into our art studio, capturing every time we use our personal vehicles, side property, and the art studio. When we enjoy our backyard and cook pit, Bill and Amy Schuh have multiple cameras pointed at the property line. Some are mounted above the new fence we have installed. One day I was loading materials and heard scratching noises outside our, our fence. When I went to investigate, Mr. Hart was peering through the fence. Note, Ms. Hartus is, is peering through our fence behind Mike. Moments later, we were, they were joined by the Shoes. In spite of this constant surveillance, constant surveillance, there have been no reported issues as reported in the staff report.
So we'll just close with, um, kind of a summary, um, of the history. I know the board was here last year and two different site visits, but just to kind of, um, sum this all up. Um, when we moved into our home at one, two, three, Summer Street, we developed the barn on the property to minimize the impact on the surrounding non-conforming lots. To give examples of the non-conforming lots, the Hart Tardiffs at one, one, nine, Summer Street have only two feet setbacks in non-conforming road frontage. The Shoes at one, one, five, Summer Street have only six feet setbacks to the barn property and non-conforming road frontage, but their house is over one hundred feet from our barn. Angeline Bavere at one, two, five, Summer Street also has non-conforming road frontage, although her house is also over a hundred feet from our barn. Given these snug lots, we knew when we moved in, we had to develop the barn to mitigate any potential impacts on our neighbors. When we moved in, we had a single driveway across our property that we shared with two abutters, the Hart Tardiffs and the Shoes. To mitigate the traffic load of three households, excuse me, on one driveway and to increase the privacy for all of us, we added a driveway at our sole expense that runs across our property to reach the back of our barn. At the same time, we added dry wells on all four corners of the barn to mitigate water runoff to our nearest neighbors. To improve the looks and functionality of the barn that had suffered years of neglect, we added a new roof, energy-efficient windows, electrical and gas service to create an artist's studio. We added insulation above and beyond the building coats to make it as quiet as possible. And we left a generous buffer zone on the front and side facing our closest neighbors. I'm going to shop, stop sharing, but I just have a couple more comments. Um, we added detractive plantings along the entire length of the property on both sides for added privacy screening, sound barrier, and aesthetic improvements. Additional improvements we made to the property include cleaning up and recovering the, our land from years of invasive plants that thrive due to neglect of the pre, one of the previous owners who had a scrap metal collection business on site. Finally, we added a solar array that provides electricity from renewable sources to our artist studio and home because we are energy conscious. All of the above work was permitted in two thousand and fifteen and approved by various town officials, including the building commissioner, the electrical inspector, the plumbing inspector, and the conservation commissioner. We have used the barn as our art studio since the work was completed in two thousand and fifteen. In conclusion, we love Maynard and we wish to stay in the community. At every stage in this process, we've cooperated fully with the town of Maynard and the ZBA. We respectfully request a renewal of our special permit since we are complying with all since we are complying with all of the conditions and there have been no violations. Uh, we did submit an application that had over forty letters of support um, and there might be an additional supporter achieved tonight who might wish to comment. We welcome any questions that the Board may have. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Donna and Andy. The, the question that I have is relating to the conditions of approval that I read. Are they your desire to keep the same?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do the Board members have any questions at this time of, of the petitioners? John, anything?
I'm good.
Paige? Leslie?
No.
And Jerry, anything?
No, Mr. Chair, I do not have any questions at this time.
Okay. Now, I understand we have a lot of people here in attendance at this meeting and I assume several of them would like to speak. And so to give us some can, not control necessarily, but some management of uh, fairness for everybody, I would like to ask for a two-minute uh, discussion from each person that wishes to speak, two minutes maximum. We're going to have a clock if, if Bill can get it running. And any comments that are made either for or against this particular request should be on point and factual. You need to start with your name and address so we can get you in the record. And we, uh, again, need to have the points with facts behind them and not just an emotional comment one way or the other. We need to be succinct so that the Board can, can understand and make some judgment out of that. So we have a series of emails and letters that are on the website. You can read them there. What we have right now is two of them from the Tardis and Hart. Uh, two of them from, I think there were two, actually there were two earlier from Boyesford, Sykes, Morden, Carter and Schuh. So those are there. And first of all, I would like to ask if there is anybody that wishes to speak in favor of this petition for the renewal.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, could you see the, um, you're gonna open for public comment? Can, I think I did the timer right. Can you see it?
So, zoom in now.
Not, not yet.
Okay, let me, I'm gonna take back this controller's screen. I think it's probably wants to be me, okay.
It worked earlier, folks. It's just technical difficulties. There we go. Now I see, oh, it's running. Just stop it. Get it back to.
Yeah, we got it. All right, it'll start whenever.
All right, so the first thing is anybody that wishes to speak in favor of this renewal request. And I'm not seeing any hands up. Oh, yes, there we, oh, we've got a thumb up. Is that the same as a hand up?
I got two up. Let's see, okay, I'm gonna un-mute these. You gotta give me a minute to get to everybody here, okay? Uh, cause yeah, Linda. And I think the best thing to do I've asked, let's see. Okay, um. All right, I have two unmuted right now, Mr. Chair.
All right, so uh, let's, let's go, as they're showing on my screen, we have Linda's iPad. So Linda's iPad, if you could identify yourself where you're located and we're asking for people speaking in favor. So Bill, you, you know, start the clock. Linda should be ready to speak.
Yes. My name is Linda Koskinen. I live at 129 Summer Street. I'm a neighbor. I love having these artists in the neighborhood. They have fulfilled everything that's asked of them and I just ask that you be fair with them when you grant the permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we have, I don't know, Cat, Cadija Brown. You have the floor.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, my name's Cadija Brown. I live at Seven Howard Road in Maynard, uh, sort of around the corner from the site. Um, I'm a member of FinCom and I'm also on the sixty-one, sixty-three Summer Street Reuse Committee. Um, you still hear me?
Yes.
Oh, um, so I wanted to say, um, as not a long-time member of, um, oh, I didn't realize I was, uh, there you go. Okay, thanks. Um, I wanted to say not as a long-time member of the town of Maynard, probably about five years now. Um, I've been getting involved in the town and have seen the value of the community and the interest in trying to keep the artists as a, a cultural benefit to the, um, the culture of Maynard. So, um, also as a member of the sixty-one, sixty-three Streets, um, Summer Street Reuse Committee, we're gonna be you, leaving, um, the, the community, the artist community there is gonna be leaving that site. And it's, um, gonna be a hole that, um, I hope the, um, uh, artist community is able to fill somewhere else, but we want to support the artists in Maynard and we, um, I strongly support, I don't wanna take up all your time, but we strongly support, um, any artists that are working out of their home and, um, can contribute to the town of Maynard. Thank you.
All right. I wanna remind people that we're looking for factual issues regarding the conditions of the approval or any other factual items related to this. I appreciate that. Susan, I think you're next.
Yes, Susan Erickson, seventy-six Concord Street. I'm also the Chair of the Conservation Commission, but I'm speaking on my own behalf. Um, I just feel that the applicants in this case and, and a case in front of the Conservation Commission have more than fulfilled their requirements by both Boards and I highly recommend that this be approved, uh, without much further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda, you have your hand up. Is that new or is that not?
No, 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 no. I'm done.
All right, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Oh, we, we have a hand here, Lisa and Dave Smith.
Yeah, let me, I just, let's see.
Or Lisa and Steve Smith, excuse me. Are, are you?
I think you can hear me.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Steve Smith, uh, Two Maple Court, um, a local artist as well as a member of the Conservation Commission in town. Also, I have been in the landscape construction business for over thirty-five years. Um, and I can attest to how impeccable Andy and Donna keep their property. I, I am, uh, constantly impressed by the diligence they take with how, um, their landscape is, um, well-maintained and I highly support their, uh, application tonight.
Thank you. All right, so Linda, your hand is still up. I assume that.
That, no, no, how do I take it down?
I don't know.
Sort of reactions, I think.
Yeah.
At the bottom of the screen.
Okay.
I think. Yeah, and then.
Uh, it's done. Yay, we got that. So, and anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this renewal application? I see a strange kind of hand signal on Robbie. Double hand signal. Okay, Robbie, you're on mute. There you go. Um, you're, Bill, you ready with the clock?
Yep.
Okay, Robbie, you have the floor? Robbie, can you hear us? Hello, Robbie? I think you've muted yourself somehow, Robbie.
No, he's not muted.
Now he's muted.
Now he is. I'll try it again. Let's see. Robbie, can you hear us? Okay, well, maybe we try that.
I wonder if he's got his microphone turned off on his end.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna have to move on. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? All right, I'm looking through the attendees. I don't see any other handwaves. So, do we have anybody that wants to speak in opposition to the renewal of this application? Okay, we have a bunch of hands that showed up here. I don't know who was first. Let's go with Amy and Bill Shu.
Okay, we may minute here. Okay, should be unmuted. Okay, I think you're okay.
Oh, we, we have somebody's screen here. What is this all about?
I don't know.
Who's, who's sharing their screen now?
It says Robbie McCabe at the top.
Okay, I got, um, all right, let's try this again. All right, there's, let's see, Amy and Bill Shu, okay, all right.
Sorry about that delay. Go, go ahead, Amy and Bill.
Uh, Bill Shu, one-one-five Summer Street. Uh, I just wanna clear up, like, a man, I've never said like, uh, any horrible things about the neighbors here, but I just totally got smeared by having surveillance cameras everywhere on somebody. In, in case anybody's curious, I do have a lot of cameras at my house and they're all about two to three feet off the ground for the wildlife. I actually track it through the winter so I can see where the game trails are. And I have a couple ones that are a little bit higher because they go over the garden, so I can see what's eating the food. And that way I can see what I need to do to try to put back there. I don't have anything pointed at their house except for two areas where I need security on my property. One is not, I mean, there's not anything that you see people. It's still my property. It's just the two areas that don't focus on wildlife. Everything else out there is for wildlife in the yard. And that was just kinda really ugly and gross. I didn't really like the way that felt. Um, I'm sorry, that, there was a bunch of misrepresentations inside that whole thing. But that, that one just really, that didn't make me feel good at all. I wanted to, to please have the opportunity to clear that up. Um, I, I did have a question. It was a quick one pertaining to the case. And it was something that was said in the opening part of it where I believe you said that the, the town attorney had made an appeal to the appeal to the appeal to the butler, or I'm not sure how that works, but that she agrees with it. But I thought that so select board had voted not to support this case at all. So I was unclear as to why the, the, the town was being used to support the case. I don't understand a lot of this jargon, so if someone could explain it to me, it would be great. Uh, but I do appreciate your time. I do appreciate you letting me, uh, I just sort of say that, that was, that, that didn't feel good.
I appreciate your, your comments on that.
I, I would like to speak for my, I don't, I won't take two minutes, but I would also like to speak too. I don't know if you wanna respond to go first, but.
I, I, I would like to take this one at a time.
Well, we're, we're on a shared screen. I, can you come back to us then? I'll just leave my hand up.
You can do that and we'll, we'll deal with what we need to deal with.
Okay, thank you.
The, the point on this hearing is for people speaking for or in opposition to the special permit request. And the issues are the conditions of approval that we penned a year ago or almost a year ago. And if there are any issues that speak to that, uh, that we should know about when the zoning board makes their decision. I don't know about the legal ramifications. I don't know what is happening on the state level. The point for us is, is this a permit renewal request with enough information to be able to renew it? Or are there issues that we need to understand before we make a renewal for it? So with that, I would like to go on to, uh, oh, it says Yvette there, but I don't think you're Yvette in the upper-left corner of my screen. I'm sorry, I.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, do you want me to, are, is, uh, town council gonna respond? Or do you want me to, um, go to the next speaker?
I, I'm going to the next speaker because, you know, he had some issues he wanted to vent on, but I don't know where either of those items that he mentioned have to do with the special permit renewal.
Okay.
If you wanna comment further on that, go ahead, but I don't believe that has to do with a special permit renewal. It's just, he was curious about certain facts that I cannot supply information on. That are not, not related.
Okay.
So, I think you're Mr. Hart there in the corner, is that right?
I am, sir.
Great, so we got your two minutes going, so.
Great, I might need like thirty seconds more, but, um, my name's Michael Hart. I live at one-nineteen Summer Street. I'm a direct abutter to the, uh, the one-two-three Summer Street business. Um, listen, the external, the existing permit is for a trade shop. Uh, it does, it's for an art studio. So which one is it? How can you renew a trade shop's permit if you're gonna call it an art studio? I think that's, uh, there, there's some, something needs to change with how that's worded. Um, and also art studios, as I understand it from the table, are specifically prohibited in an S1 and there are no special permits allowed for an art studio in an S1 according to the bylaw tables. I think this business should do what all businesses do and rent space in a properly zoned area to continue their business instead of infringing on their abutting neighbors. Um, I think that letters of support and motions of support from non-abutters should hold little to no value uh, for, for this, because they're not the ones that are sitting next to it, hearing it, seeing it, listening to it, et cetera. Um, also, we've got plenty of stuff that we filed with the, the housing, uh, or the, uh, building inspector. Um, there's light pollution just this week several times, uh, past nine PM where all of their lights are on and, and on, are, are. Um, the, they shouldn't get to renew early, um, to avoid the new zoning laws, uh, especially because the applications for an art studio and not a trade shop, so I don't know which one they're renewing. Um, uh, it says in their application that they are an art studio and not a trade shop. Um, they are not abiding by the current restrictions. Um, several abutters have put evidence in documents and to the police and building commissioner about, uh, you know, light and noise pollution. And, uh, you know, they shouldn't also, if you do renew this, they shouldn't be allowed to have weekend, uh, hours. And, uh, also all the cameras that are on my property, the one that they showed in my window is facing internal because we have, uh, nurses that take care of my mother, um, and we also need to be able to see them coming in the driveway. Um, so that's what the other cameras for. We're not surveilling them. Um, when we hear something, we come out and we document. And that's what I've got. Thank you for your time. Appreciate everybody's, uh, listening to me.
All right. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition at this point?
We got, Ms. Shu is ready. You ready? Okay, this is for Amy Shu. Let's see here. Good. Hey, there you go.
Okay, thank you. Um, Amy Shu, one-one-five Summer Street. I just wanted to, um, I, I wanna just go back to the factual again. Um, just this week I submitted, um, violations to Mr. Asman. Bill submitted to him. We haven't heard anything back from him, but they're clear violations in our opinion. Um, and it would be nice to at least get a response. So that's something that's frustrating on our end. Um, the whole basis of this application is, um, the applicants presented twice. They presented last time and they presented tonight. Um, they submitted an application that, um, had something changed in it. So that in the April meeting, there was, there was, well, I'll just say in the new meeting for tonight, there was a new letter in there and it didn't mark as like that it was changed or anything and it was requesting a five-year renewal period. I know that seems like they might have changed their request today, but everything about this just seems kind of like off. Um, I watched the ZBA meeting from May and you guys made jokes about how it was noisy last time, so this should go last. This is noisy for a reason and I know you said not to, you know, have emotional pleas and all of that, but it is emotional. We live by it all the time and we deal with it and they're condescending people who are just really difficult to deal with and you can't, we, we can't go to them and say, oh, let's try to mediate this because it's impossible. They're, 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 it's just, it's impossible. Anyhow, um, applying early to avoid the changes in the, um, trade shop rules. trade shop rules, I stayed to that meeting. I was the last one to speak at it and I asked a question. And you, and, um, it was answered with they'll just change it and call it something else. You know, so it's, it's really frustrating. And, uh, again, emotional, not emotional, it's, it seems very, very corrupt. I'm just gonna say it out loud so everybody here can hear. It's, it's not okay. It's really not okay from, from the beginning of this process to now.
So the, the question that I have, Amy, is what are the facts relating to, you call them violations? I've got no records of violations. You're saying, you know, other, other issues here. We need to have facts.
So does, does Mr. Asman share those with you? Because we were told to go to him when we have complaints. So we have emailed him several times. I, I've emailed him twice this week. I haven't heard anything. We've emailed him about chainsaw. We've emailed him about light pollution, nine P M. on a Friday and a Saturday night, nine thirty maybe it was. The whole place is lit up like there's a party going on. I don't know, but it's, it's, it's a lot, you know, and it's not even, it's, I don't know. It's, we, we email him because that was the avenue we were told. We asked that specific question at the last meeting, like, who is the person? Who is the direct person to ask? We were told it was him. If he doesn't respond or tell you, then I don't know how, what else to do. We're like in this little, I feel like this decision was like kind of made up and even, even at seven oh one, when I went on to this meeting, the agenda didn't even have this on there and all the documents were changed around and every, it just, everything seems.
Well, Amy, 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 that, that seven oh one thing is we had a minor glitch. And the glitch was we had to correct the spelling of your last name. And that's why the thing was down for a minute while Bill was correcting the spelling of your last name.
That's fine, but also like, like going back into like the, even the, the, um, report that was changed today, you know, like there's just so many things. I get it, but like the, the whole fact that they put a, snuck a letter in there, you're, the, the, um, staff report was changed today and it says right on it that it was changed today. Their application was changed since town meeting or after the last meeting, whenever, and that never said it was updated. So people could just like fly through it and not realize that they were asking for a whole lot more than, um, you know, than they did. I mean, even in the original permit, they asked for, you know, deliveries two, four to six times a year, and you guys gave them every week one. Like, where did that come from? Everything just seems so out of like character. It just seems like this was a decision made because people are in cahoots. It does not seem like.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, do, I, I'm not, I didn't time this. This was a response to your question. I don't know.
Yeah, and I, I believe the two minutes are well up, and I was trying to be patient here, but you're right.
I appreciate it.
That factual information on the document that was submitted in the, in the one that we've seen since April. The application, there was a document that was dated March thirteenth that was not in the original package that has a whole bunch of information that's very convenient for town meeting being passed. That says if they get their permit, they're submitting their application in good faith that if they get their permit, they will not have to ever again apply for a permit and will have to, and will be able to continue pretty much in perpetuity at that location as an ASRite business or an A H. Something that didn't mean anything. And that was added in, that was not available at any prior meeting or made notice anywhere else. That was added in. It was not noted that it was added in. It was not stamped anywhere and it was not on the original that we had gone over. I'm sorry, that was just the factual information.
And so when we look at this permit renewal application, and yes, it's complicated by the town voting and passing an adjustment and amendment to the bylaws. Those bylaws are not in effect yet. We're still operating under the original bylaws that the first permit was issued under. And so the concern about the phraseology and so on of what might be if the new had been passed and approved and so on and so forth. That, that is not part of this discussion. This discussion is a renewing of the special permit as it was approved last time, and I'm looking for any factual, uh, deviations that we need to consider to make it work. And we've heard from some folks that say it's a good thing and they haven't seen any problems, and we've heard from some other folks that there are problems. We need the facts to be able to debate. And so, Mr. Hart, I see your hand up twice electronically and in person, which is great, so. Let's, let's get back to you and Bill, you can start the clock again, but take yourself off mute before you speak there, Mr. Hart.
Uh, we did have, okay, uh, and then we have Yvette on, um, there. So Mr. Hart will go first and.
Yes, take yourself off mute there, though. There you go. Thank you.
I, I asked seven questions here with bullet points, and I got no response from anybody on the board about the things that I asked about. Um, is anybody gonna respond, or was that just in one ear and out the other and I?
The point, the point is we're looking for the factual issues relative to the renewal of this permit.
Yeah, factual issues. They have violated their conditions on multiple occasions and we filed a report.
I have not seen that report.
They, they're filing a renewal for an art studio and not a trade shop, though their initial permit is for a trade shop. Those are facts. Like, what, what's the deal? Are they gonna get, are they gonna get a, a trade shop permit renewed? Because it says they're a, a commercial art studio.
There, no, they're, they're a non-commercial. The document I saw is that they're a non-commercial and they're trying to get a renewal of the existing permit.
They're world famous people that sell art. That's what they do. It's a commercial entity. They have three commercial entities housed in that, in their home.
So I don't want to get into a debate here. The point is they're doing, asking for a renewal of the existing permit as the existing permit is written.
Okay, but they say they're an art studio. Not a trade shop. Which one is it? They don't look it to be both.
That, that is not something I can answer for you. The point is we're going for the renewal of the previous.
This is a debate. This is, I don't want this stuff next to my house and you guys aren't taking me seriously.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes, please.
They're incredibly disruptive.
Mr. Chair, um, so this is the public comment period is not a question and answer period for the Board of Appeals. So you're taking public comment, not, it, to your point, not engaging in a colloquy between, um, people who want to comment and, and cross-examine you frankly. This is your hearing and you're taking public comment. You're not required to take and provide questions and answers. If the applicant wants to address the questions that are raised after this is over, perhaps you could li, give the applicant a, a time to comment on the comments that were raised, but the, the board does not have to enter into a question and answer period. It's a public comment period.
Thank you for helping me on clearing that up. I see a hand up from Mr. McKay.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm Dave McKay. I represent, um, uh, Andy Moreland and Donna Dodson, and town council just made my point, so I'm gonna, uh, reserve any further comment. Thank you.
You're welcome. So.
The event has been, uh, is in line.
So I see the, the same people with their hands up again, and before I recognize any of them, I want to confirm that what you're going to say or want to say is factual evidence for or against this special permit renewal request.
Oh, I see. Mr. Chair, there's two events. I see what the problem is. Uh, no, uh, we have one that has not had an opportunity to speak.
That's, that's Mrs. Yvette rather than Mr. Yvette.
Right, okay. You ready?
Yes, I am ready. Are you, Yvette?
I'm ready. Thank you. Um, sorry, I was logged into both computers in the house. Um, thank you again to the board for all the time, um, and your professionalism handling this. I know it's not easy and we really appreciate it. And honestly, like I commend Dawn and Andy on their art career. For me, this has nothing to do with art. I have three art degrees. I've, I actually have shown at galleries and um, support the art world, so it has nothing to do with that. It has to do with the noise and the disruption. Um, I wrote a letter, and if you look at the first page, they do comment that they're not a trade shop, which I have the same question of if they're not a trade shop, then maybe this negates the whole thing. And then I did put, um, a picture of all of the, of the neighborhood, and I, I did make a, a box around every house that's written against having this in our neighborhood. Um, and you can see it's like a lot of people that have bought them two on each side. So we, we really would love to, um, have our needs come above the needs of two people. I think there's like eight of us that are basically direct abouters, eight humans. Um, and then I did link to videos that we think are violation of noise. If you guys aren't getting those, um, that are really loud. I would like to also request that they, you know, stop having things on the weekends. We had COVID, unfortunately. We're really sick and the doctor told us to sleep in, but we couldn't sleep in on a Saturday because at nine P M., nine A M., they started like pounding on something outside. I don't know what it was. I don't have a video of it. It's just like very disruptive to have commercial activity happening in a residential neighborhood. Same with deliveries. They're very disruptive. We can't enjoy our backyard. Um, and then I just, it's, it's, it's completely changed the character. So there's a lot of tension there right now. Um, we can't, we basically cannot enjoy our backyard. Most of us now can't enjoy our backyard because of the tension. Um, it's affected our health. It's affected our jobs. It's like, we support art in the community. Just move it to a commercially zoned area so that we don't have to have, like, deal with this on a daily basis. That's all I have to say. Thank you again for your time.
All right, well, I appreciate your comments, but my challenge here is to come up with data substantiated facts, information either for or in opposition. And I'm hearing you say that you don't like the noise, you don't like deliveries. And frankly, one, one day I drove by the property just because I was going somewhere. And I saw that driveway that goes between your house and the side of the barn full of pickup trucks and stuff. And I, I didn't understand. It's, it's not the petitioners, it's something else happening, and I think that's your backyard that you're complaining you can't use. So I'd like some comment as to, you know, what you're trying to say when there's vehicles coming and going in your backyard. Uh, you're on mute again.
Uh, who do you want off?
And you, Mrs. Yvette.
Okay.
Thank you. I like being Mrs. Yvette. I like when we log in, when we check into a hotel and Mike's Mrs. Yvette too. That makes me happy. Um, so I don't want to like, you know, get into it, but about fifty percent of the time we go into our backyard, the cops are called. Which is like an awful thing that I wouldn't want to wish on anybody. Not for me. I've actually never called the cops, but from things that, you know, happen because of the tension in the neighborhood. Nobody, nobody should have to deal with that, and I wouldn't wish that neighbor experience on anybody on this call. So if you pull the police reports, you'll see what I'm talking about. Um, but we've stopped gardening. You know, we don't have barbecues. I don't have our family over because you never know. Will there be a delivery? Will the cops be called? Um, can I have knitters over and knit? Nope, I can't. The cops will be called, so.
So who's calling the cops?
Everybody, like.
No, I need a name. Who's calling the cops?
Well, if you pull the police reports, I think you'll see that all of us abutters have had issues the cops were called on.
That, that's an interesting point because I had Bill look into the police reports today. And he found nothing.
I don't understand why that's the trick of the case. I think it's, you know, because of the tension. No, we did have somebody fix our deck because it had started to break. There was a pickup truck, but, you know, we have a pickup truck. Bill and Amy have a pickup truck. I don't know who is in the backyard when you came through, but it is used by people for sure to come, can go from Bill's barn or from our house.
All right. You had commented on some videos. Are they available? Are they uh, substantiated as to when they were taken?
Yeah, they're all on iCloud, and if we trust Apple, which, you know, I think most of us do at this point because we have iPhones. Um, that they're timestamped, so you can see the time and the date, which is all during this, this, this nine months since their period the permit started. There's only a few. I have many, many more. If you want to see more, we can send them all to you guys. We just.
Well, that, so they're not in the record for tonight, so that makes it a little hard.
My letter, there's a link, it says.
I saw the link in the letter, and that's, that's not all of them. That's just about six or so.
Yeah, we can, we can all send them to you if you want.
Bill, what's, what's your pleasure? I would like to show and, and let Yvette pick one or two and, and let them be seen. Can you handle that, Bill, or should we let Yvette take over?
Well, I have, I have the links like everybody else does, and I, I've downloaded from the links. I don't know, um, which ones specifically would be appropriate. Uh, the, but just for the, for the public, there's, um, uh, the links are active and they can, they can be accessed. They were all placed up. The letter came today, so I haven't had a chance to, you know, review every. Um, I did look at all the videos, but I'm not sure which is what, how. I don't know what town council would recommend. Uh, if that would be something that would be recommended to do here, I can pull, I can pull up what I have on here.
That's up to the chair, um, for sure. So you have all the public records that are available to the members. I presume all the members have received them. Um, and have reviewed them. So if they haven't, then you can look at the videos, but otherwise, just like you do all your other letters. Uh, Mr. Chair, you've provided those to the members, but that's up to you.
My, my thought on this is they're very concerned about the noise generation. And I would like to have the applicant comment on what was causing that noise on that day that they made that recording. That, that's the direction I would like to go at this point, but not to do every one, just, you know, have Yvette pick one or two that describe the kind of things that she's talking about. And while she's looking for that, I see a hand up from Mr. McKay. So if you could take yourself off mute there and comment, that would be good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just a point of order. At the beginning, um, you made, um, some, uh, rules for public comment, and those were that public comments would be, uh, two minutes. The applicants, uh, those speaking in favor of the application all complied with that rule and um, that's not happening so far with, um, with those speaking in opposition. Um, now there's discussion about watching videos and things of that nature, and, and I, I think public comment should be just that, 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 uh, the, any information is in the record already. Um, those speaking in favor of the application and those speaking uh, against the application all have two minutes to, to say their piece. I think you've, you've done that. You've given folks an opportunity. And I don't think that, uh, presentations should be, uh, permitted beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts on that. I appreciate that. As I looked through those videos, there was some kind of a noise on them. I don't know where the noise came from. I don't know uh, the date when those were made. That didn't show when I was looking at it. And so that's, that's why I wanted to at least get one hard data point in the system as to what, what we're talking about or what the complainers are talking about, about noise. And is it above ambient noise as we phrased it in the, uh, um, conditions of approval? Noise generating activities conducted within the studio, noise levels to be controlled to be minimally detected outside the studio. And so if they're beyond that, we need to talk about it. And that's, that's what I'm trying to get at. And if Yvette has found one of the videos that demonstrates this, I will then ask Donna and Andy to comment on when and what, and if it's even applicable to this. So Yvette, you, if you found the video that you wanted to share.
Okay, so here's what I, I, I will allow multiple sharing. So, and I will unmute. Is that what you want, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I, I'm assuming if Yvette can do it, it will also broadcast the audio. That's the issue here.
Okay, let's, let's put Zoom to the test. This is one of my first, one of my favorite work exercises also. Um, I'm gonna try to share my screen to iPhoto. Let's see how Apple does. And then this is a video from December fifth from actually the shoes yard. So it's past our yard, beyond our boundaries, so past the one, applicant's boundary, past our yard boundaries to, um, the shoes yard, which, um, as the applicant said, is over a hundred feet, I think, from their barn, if that's correct.
I'm not hearing any sound.
I don't know how to, I don't know how to put it up. If you, if you are able to listen on your side, it's very, very loud. Um, I don't know if it's the way the buildings are and it echoes, but it's extremely loud. So December fifth is the date.
Of what year, please?
December fifth of twenty twenty two.
Oh, I see it on a header there. Thank you. I missed that.
Four twenty eight P M. So that's within the hours are supposed to work, but the noise generator was. Four twenty eight P M. So that's within the hours are supposed to work, but the noise generator was like, like unbelievable.
All right. So we can't get the sound. So that doesn't work. Sorry about the, the delay here. So Donna and Andy, I would like to put the question back to you people as to what these potential noises are, if you can recognize, you know, from going through this, the, the town website where the link is on her email. If there's anything you can shed light on to what they're talking about.
Yeah. Hi. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair for that. Um, that question. We did take a look at the videos today. Um. And I, I could not, I also could not hear sound in the videos. So I didn't know. Um, I heard like a door slam. It sounded like from their, their door, but I didn't hear, um, any sounds other than really muffled sounds. Um, so I was also, um, actually very confused as to what, what we were looking at.
All right. Thank you. So the challenge event is to get some hard evidence to say that the conditions of the approval on last year's permit are not being abided by, and I don't have that evidence yet. I have your, your comments, but I don't have, you're on mute. I'm sorry. You're, I don't, I don't have facts to base any debate by the zoning board to go on. So you're, you're still on mute. I'm sorry.
Oh, no. Do you want me to unmute? I, I've got everybody muted again.
But just, just for a few, because she wanted to respond to my comment.
There you go.
I think, um, I think that Zoom actually has this feature where it, it, um, now like mitigates any background noise. So no matter what I play, it'll be muted because of the Zoom functionality. And thank you to Zoom for that, for all of us who suffer through dog barking at their workdays. Um, so if you play on your side, Paul, I think you'll actually hear it.
I, I heard some, some background noise. I couldn't place where it was coming from.
Well, that's the problem with all of our videos because we're not inside their barn. So we're hearing the noise outside and we like take a, we take a video, but it looks all of videos look like us taking a video of like random outside area.
I understand, but to be substantiatedable, if that's a word, data. I, I need, I need to have something that says, okay, the noise came from them. Either a police report that walked in on it and the policeman said, you're making too much noise, something to go on to say that they're, they're, they're not controlling their noise enough or something like that. I don't have it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what happens to the, to the complaints once we make them. Like I couldn't comment to that. We are going through the process though, so.
Well, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I can explain that to the board real quick. In, in general, the pro, there's two ways for complaints to come in. Um, the, if it's during town, typical town hall hours. Uh, it, it would be, the, the way to contact is contact the main office, the Office of Municipal Services and Rick Asman or, um, but you would always want to contact the Office of Municipal Services. There's a complaint form actually on that has been placed on, um, the website for that. After hours, like I, I think you said, there's something that happened a Friday evening. Well, you're not, building commissioner is not gonna respond, you know, i- i- Friday night or something like that. That's where the police report comes in. To be clear for the board, uh, we do this, this is not uncommon. Uh, we, we respond to noise complaints, light complaints and so on in other projects. I mean, so the, the, the process is in place. Um, but without having, um, you know, the reports and, and things like this. Um, it, it, if it's, if it's not provided, you know, we don't, we don't, um, there's really nothing to go on with that. Uh, we are, any, um, police reports were forwarded typically might be a couple of days or so. If the building commissioner has a violation, which every day there's something pretty much. Um, it, it, it's circulated in the office typically. Uh, so that, that's the process anyway for future, if there's any future uh, issues, um, during business hours, just fill out a complaint form that goes in. It might not be that minute that it gets acted on, small office, but, uh, it will not be, um, uh, ignored and, and, um, with the police, if it's after hours, um, you know, they'll typically respond and generate a report within. It, we, we get them within a few days.
So let me ask you, Bill. The, what you're describing now on filling out a complaint form versus what you told them in the past, is it the same?
No, we, we instituted the complaint form to, to, um, make it more centralized. Uh, but yeah, the process, nobody was told not to contact the Office of Municipal Services. But contacting, uh, the building commissioner certainly is the most direct way, but you may not get an individual response. You know, they're gonna go. Uh, if it's a complaint and he investigates it, there's typically a, um, um, a notification. If there's a violation, we had several this week, I mean, different things. So it, it may, it's not going to be, you know, that minute, if that's what you're asking, but um, the complaint form is just to simplify everything now so that it, um, automatically goes in the system. That's been the last month or so.
So what, what I am hearing is that they have filed either through the police department or calling or contacting the building commissioner, several complaints. And you're looking through the files today, did not find any.
I contacted the police department. The last complaint report that they generated was in July of, uh, twenty twenty two that the police had. Uh, so far as the building commissioner, I don't have anything, um, in, that's been started in our um, process that he's reviewing.
So they, you, you commented it might take a few days. And so if a few days have gone by, we should have those records.
Sure.
Either from the building commissioners' emails or however they contacted them.
Well, if, yeah, right. If they find, i- i- if, I mean, the, again, there's, there's something typically every day comes up. Uh, whether it's a, a, a sign that's put up illegally, whether it's light coming over on a property or whatever the case is. Um, and there's a case opened, um, where the, it's investigated now. Not every, uh, case ends up that, that, the, there's a violation deemed to exist. But, um, a lot new and, um, and then after hours as they're, you know, it's, like I said, anything after hours on the weekend, you're not going to get.
I understand. So my concern here is that the reports are legitimate, but you couldn't find them or you didn't look deep enough. So I don't think we can continue this hearing until we get confirmation that the complaints are there or not.
Uh, we have no record of them. Speaking to the police department today. Um, there's no, as far as I know, there is no case that's under investigation now by the building commissioner. There may be, and I don't know about. But there has, and there have been no violations issued by the building commissioner in this project. So there's absolutely nothing that I can, um, I could report has been, uh, that I've seen in the forms report. If, I mean, w- waiting on it, um, if something came in, you know, I don't know. I mean, it's possible.
When you say, uh, police investigation.
No, building, build it. No, no.
Oh, building.
Investigate. The police would go out and make a report. As I said, this is, this is something that's, we do this periodically. I mean, it, it's barely a week goes by that we don't. That, that's why I'm kind of having, I'm struggling with trying to understand you know, what the actual, uh, what would have happened here. I don't, I'm not sure. But, uh, we have light violations. We have noise violations. We have building without, um, proper permitting. We have sign violations. We have, oh, this happens constantly. So it, it's not like this is something that, uh, you know, is, is a rarity for the department.
All right. So I, I saw Leslie with her hand raised. Leslie, do you want to add something here? Comment?
Yeah, um, if the police don't have a decibel meter, um, how can their determination be anything but subjective?
I think that's the way the, um, minimally detectable outside of the studio. And yes, that's subjective, but that's the way the previous special permit was written.
Well, in, in any case, I mean, we have, um, state regulations about noise. Um, and I don't know how the police can make a determination in any case, since I'd be surprised if they have a decibel meter.
Yeah, I've never, I've never found that they, they make a decibel based report to us. What we get is that yes, there was noise from this air conditioner that was audible on the street, you know, that type of thing. So it, 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 it's a, a sort of a, um, a report that there was a disturbance noted. And at that point, depending on what the disturbance is, is how it's addressed. And you're absolutely right. It, it's, the town does not have its own, uh, audio um, standards that we use defer to the state. And, um, that's a very difficult. Um, that's a difficult process it, to get the state, uh, involved at this point. Uh, we're in cases where, uh, it has been, um, brought up that there's a, a, a noise violation, uh, typically a third party's brought in to, um, document. We've had things like garbage compactors. We've had air conditioning units. We've had um, eh, you know, HVAC, we've had trucks slamming doors. We've had uh, reports of, you know, everything from idling vehicles you can imagine. So there, but the, the question is, is there disturbance noted? Here's a report on it. Then further action, um, th- they can decide if there's uh, further action by the building commissioners needed or, or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, John, you have your hand up?
Yeah, it's just out of curiosity, Bill. I don't know if it's possible or not. Is it, is it at all possible to get a report from the building commission to say he's logged how many complaints for one twenty three summer? And then how many of those did he actually go out and investigate? If he did or he didn't, that, that's all. Just trying to get that, that.
I, I can absolutely ask him that, but I want to be one hundred percent clear. I have no violations. Right, right. I will, I will be happy to check with the building commissioner if anything has come in or if he has a- aware of anything.
Um. And then I, I'm, I'm looking, oh, I see another hand waving there, a live hand, Mr. Shu. Uh, if you could take Mr. Shu off mute, Bill.
All right. I've been struggling all night with why I haven't been able to, to communicate correctly. Every time I talk, you say that you need factual stuff about the case and, and the renewal. And I, I finally got it. Uh, after I go through it again and again and again, it just doesn't appear to be a renewal of the same permit.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of different things about it. And if you guys would read, I would, I would beg you to read that March thirteenth letter out loud. Uh, so that everybody could hear it and understand what the ramification of a renewal of this permit would mean. And that, that's why you talk about facts about why to renew it, you know, why shouldn't we renew it? And part of it is actually that it's not a renewal of the same thing at all. It has a lot more attached to it. And I know that that's some stuff that you guys can deliberate afterwards. And I understand that part, but that, knowing how this has gone so far, you know, we went through the first process and now we're in this. It's, it just doesn't appear to be the same application or a renewal. It almost looks like it should be a completely new application. And that's what's, that, I think that's been my problem trying to communicate with you because to me, that's part of the renewal process is what the renewal actually means for being renewed. Is it just the same thing or is it something different? And this one doesn't feel, uh, quite like the other one did. And that, that I think I, is why I had difficulty and I, I do apologize for every time I talked and you said I need something you know, more factual about it. So I do apologize for that, Mr. Chairman. Um, sorry for calling you Paul again, but I do apologize. Thank you for your time.
All right. So I, I understand. I have read the various documents that have come forth. I spent literally all day today going through the, the various documents. And I do see what you are referring to, to however is, I asked the applicants tonight what they are doing and they want the same renewal. That was early on. You heard it this evening. They want a renewal of the same permit. Regardless of the semantics that were written into the various earlier in process documents, they're asking for a renewal of the same permit. And so that's, that's where I stand on that. Are there any other comments, information that we should know about that other than trying to find any building commissioner or police documents? David McKay. Uh, you gotta unmute first. I'm sorry.
Maybe, oh, okay.
There you go. Now you're open.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to note very quickly that in the staff report, it notes that, um, applicants have not been cited for non-compliance with the original special permit today. Uh, and also that the, uh, building commissioner, uh, among others, reviewed the application and had no objections. So I think those issues have been addressed that you were asking about earlier with respect to the building commissioner. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And, and then, uh, Mr. Hart, I think you had a question up too. So Bill, could you open up his email or voicemail? Uh, voice. There we go. Audio. It's getting late. And there you go.
I, I'll just be really quick. Um, so we have submitted evidence in a document that was in the things. And if people haven't had time on the board to read that, all the documents that have been submitted, then I think that you should adjourn and make sure that they've read all the materials that we've sent because we have sent examples, and they're the same examples that we've sent to the building commissioner. So for Mr. Nemser to not have anything on file from the building commissioner, we've sent all kinds of complaints. And I mean, if they're not being reviewed, if they're not being taken seriously, that's what he, this board told us to do was to go to the building commissioner as the enforcement mechanism. And so we're having to enforce this ourselves. It is a sporadic noise. And how are we supposed to get any more proof than what we have, which is live video of it happening in the place where it happens in the commercial art studio that's next door to my house in an S one residential zone. So I mean, what, what else can we do to prove, like, why is the burden of proof on us? Like we, we've proved time and time again that this happens. So like, please go to Mr. Asman and, and have him send the emails that we sent. We can forward the emails that we sent with the evidence presented. Like, there's now a, there's now a form we have to fill out? Nobody said anything about a form in any of the meetings for the last forever. Apparently it's been for a month. All right. Well, nobody let me know that there was a form I needed to go fill out. I was told to contact the commissioner and which we did and got no response. So I mean, I'm happy to go fill out forms. Every time I see or hear something that's going on over there that shouldn't be, I will go down and fill out a form every time now, but that wasn't the condition before. That's not what we were instructed to do by the committee.
All right.
Or the, the board. So.
I appreciate your, your feedback there, Mr. Hart. Um, as, as I'm thinking this through, Bill, I believe we should make a continuance to talk to Mr. Asman and to talk to the police chief rather than just checking their records to see if there is something that did not make it into the system.
Well, I'll be happy to do that. I want to be clear again. I have no violations and we spoke to the police department. Uh, it wasn't me checking the records and there is, um, but I'll be happy to check whatever is the board's pleasure. But I don't want this to be misconstrued. The same is if there has been complaints, uh, maybe that there were complaints. I don't know. Um, there were no violations. That's all.
We're told to go to the police. We're told to go to the building commissioner. So the fact that you check.
So if, if you want to, uh, you know, however, the board would like me to handle it.
And I appreciate that. And I, I think, uh, we need to have a discussion amongst the board members, but you know, Mr. McKay there, I see your hand up. Yeah, unmute him, please. Eric.
Mr. Chairman, again, I, I would urge the board to not continue the hearing. I think you have the evidence that's been submitted. This is already the second hearing um, on this, uh, request to continue an existing special permit. Um, if, if there were violations by the, uh, from the police chief or the police department, you uh, from the police chief or the police department, you would have those, there would be a record of that, and Mr. Nemser would would have gotten those and provided to you, but they don't exist. Similarly, complaints with, to the building inspector, there is also a process for complaints to the building inspector, it's set out in chapter forty A. And those complaints can be made, and the fact that they're not there and that there's no violations shows that there haven't been any violations, so I would urge the board to uh, uh, vote on this matter, to grant the continuation of the special permit and uh, to not continue a search for records and documents and evidence that either doesn't exist or ha- hasn't been presented to this board during the public hearing, thank you.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. McKay. My my concern is we have an unresolved conflict. Bill Nemser has looked through and said he can't find anything, and yet the abutters say that there have been items filed, I just wanna make sure of which way it is that we've gotten whatever documents there are. And so I understand your comment that we have the the information, but I'm hearing from several people that they have made complaints and we don't have records of them available. So to to keep the peace, kinda, I would like to find out what the real story is, and I can't do that at ten o'clock at night, on a weekday here, that I think we need to continue this, and I would like to hear the board members comment, yea or nay.
Yes, continue.
Yes, continue.
Yes.
And Paige?
Yes.
Because I would like to be fair to everybody. So with that, do we have, what, where, we're near the end of June right now?
Um, that's right, next meeting.
At our next meeting, which is the end of July somewhere. Can you hit, pick a date, Bill?
That would be the twenty-fourth unless the board wanted a different, you know, date. And 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 I would like clear instruction of what the board would like me to retrieve, because bringing uh, complaints I mean, it can be, uh, if if we're saying we want, the board wants records of all complaints that come in, I'll do that, I I think you can imagine um, the volume. But uh, if it's a question of in, open investigations or violations, uh, that's a different thing altogether too, as well as police reports. So I'd like some clear direction from the board, we have limited staff that uh, and and this is going to be something, you know, I I wanna know exactly what I would um, have the uh, office uh, compile.
All right, John?
Yeah, I think what I'd like to see, Bill, just for the last six months, the complaints that came in, and from what you've said, no citations issued, just the complaints that came in. And if we can confirm, no citations issued, bye.
I I would like to help you narrow it down even more, Bill. I would like the abutters that have filed complaints or claimed to have filed complaints to give you the days that they filed the complaints. And so you can look through the various records on those dates and see if something is logged in somewhere. And then we can debate about, is the, the pain, excuse, uh, is the complaint a a big deal or a little deal, and those, what is it? I mean, what is the complaint all about? Because, you know, you look at Summer Street, that is a very busy highway with a lot of truck traffic. And they're talking about a little bit of motor or or machine noise coming out of the barn. I don't know the difference right now, because I wanna see what these complaints are. Does that make sense? Mr. Bill?
Yeah, well, I mean, do you want me to go for the last six months, that's, that's what I'm, I guess that's what I'm at.
Yeah, six or eight months.
Basically, what I'm gonna do is uh, I'll I'll see what we have for um, you know, if there's any any complaints that are outstanding or that have come in, I'll get records, or the emails that have come in. If they have, anything that I've received, or that the uh, office has received, um, I believe you would already have, and um, if that's what the board would like, then I'll make sure I have that.
Great. Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, if I, if I could, just to, just to make sure that you're following um, forty A and the enforcement properly. Um, uh, so obviously, y- you want the complaints, you should get the complaints. However, it's the building inspector makes the determination about whether there's an actual violation. So in order to see the entire picture, you would want to see if any actual violations were issued um, based upon those complaints, because it's the building inspector's determination that enforces your permit.
And a violation is something that the building commissioner would have corresponded back to the artists.
Or not, is the case may be, right, yeah, if there was a violation, yes, he would have corresponded it to the artist, that's correct.
Okay. Paige, you had your hand up?
I don't know, I think I was just going to say, I wanna be careful about litigating decisions the building inspector already made. I'm, I I think it'd be helpful to have some context for the number of complaints that may have been made, but ultimately, if it'd be helpful to know how many of those were being investigated, if any.
All right, thank you. Yep. Brad, you had your hand up?
Um, yes, the um, the abutters who are um, making these um, complaints should have the emails that they sent and a timestamp on them, um, and have them addressed um, to the building commissioner, I would assume. Um, if that's the case, um, hopefully you will provide that to um, to the board or to, to Bill. Um, so he can follow up on it, if it's, if it's the case where it went to the building commissioner, and the building commissioner um, decided to act or not act on it, um, and that's, that's something that we should find out, if that's, if that is the case.
Yes.
It it seems odd that something like this um, would fall through the cracks.
Yeah, and this, this is where I'm getting confused as well, because, you know, they they put together some rather lengthy emails describing their complaints, but they didn't include the complaints. And so I'd like to see their emails, yes, but you can always doctor and in, you know, a copy of an email. I wanna find out from the building commissioner's side what he received. You know, was it a case of a misspelling on his address, was it something else, it's a common mistake? Or or was it that he made a decision and it was not a big deal, I don't know. So I I I agree with you, and that's where I, I wasn't specifically asking for their complaint emails. I was asking them to tell Bill when they sent them, so that we can go through the records and find out when things happen. So any information you have, or can dig up, Bill, that would be good. Now, I see a hand again on Mr. McKay, is that a new hand wave, or is that an old one?
That's an old one, Mr. Chairman, I apologize.
All right, I'm I'm trying to keep everybody happy, and it's not easy. So so, Miss, Mr. Hart, you had your hand up, I I don't wanna stretch this meeting out any further, but okay, you know, give him one minute here, Bill, he he.
I just wanted to point out that, you know, I I wouldn't consider Summer Street a highway. Um, also, our backyard is relatively peaceful regardless of the traffic, except for when the artists that live next door to us uh, perform commercial activity in an S one residential zone that is supposed to be the most protective of residential zones. So my backyard is not the same as it was before the artists moved in.
Okay, thank you. So to continue this meeting, um, I would like to have it done as a motion. So could somebody make a motion for that? God.
Yep, motion to continue the meeting for one twenty-three summer to the July twenty-fourth date.
Thank you, do I get a second? Very seconds. Any further comment? So let's go through the roll call, John?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Oh, you can't vote, sorry, Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And I I'm yes as well, so we're continuing this hearing until July twenty-fourth, public comment period is still open. I wanna get answers on this particular issue of complaints. So is there anything else on the agenda that I missed, or that should be included, Bill, for tonight?
Know the agenda, I think we covered everything, Mr. Chair. Um, I, no, that's everything, right.
All right, Lisa, did I do anything that should be corrected, or are we under control?
You're under control, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. So I would like to adjourn the meeting, if we can do that. I need a vote for doing, or a motion for that, John raises his hand, are you gonna make?
To adjourn.
Jerry's gonna second.
Second.
So, John?
Yes.
Uh, I knew who's next, Paige?
Yes.
Uh, skipping Brad, Leslie?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
And I'm yes as well, it's been a long night, people, I appreciate your patience, I appreciate the input from everybody. And so have a good night, and we'll see the continuation of this in a month.
Excellent, I, thank you. Thanks, everybody.